Township Precipity Troy Hills Township Council Agenda Meeting, April 3, 2012. Public invited, public participation. Meeting called to order, 7:30 PM. Please rise for a flag salute, and after a flag salute, please remain standing.
Mr. Barbary.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we're going to take a moment of silence for the passing of former council, council member Joe Medwin, who passed away yesterday. Roll call.
Mr. Karifi?
Here. Start early, Lee. I don't know.
Give it to Karifi. Give it to Mary, I'm sorry.
It's that unit might approach right next to us.
Mr. Karifi?
Here.
Mr. Sodaro?
Here.
Mr. De Piero?
Here.
Mr. Barrara?
Here.
Mr. Stan?
Here. Others present, Mayor Barbaryio, Jasmine Lynn, Business Administrator, John Inglisino Esquire, Township Attorney, Mayor Zoroso, Acting Deputy Clerk. Purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for a township council meeting, April 10, 2012. Formal action may or may not be taken. Statement of compliance, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of open public meeting law, filed a notice at the office Township Clerk, posting the meeting a notice on the bulletin board at Municipal Building, December 15, 2011, where it's remained since that date. Legal notice appeared about Daily Record Store Letter, forwarded by fax to other local newspapers or local radio stations, on December 19, 2011. Note, council meetings are videotaped, aired on Cablevision, public access, Channel 21, 2:00 PM Sundays, also available for viewing, www.precipity.net. For presentations today, we have a special homes in New Jersey, development of a group home for developmentally disabled in Precipity.
How are you?
Good evening. My name is Terry McKeon. I'm the Executive Director of Special Homes of New Jersey. We have group homes in Wharton and Boonton and Denville, and a supportive housing project here in Precipity. With me is Hasish Patel. He is the Senior Housing Associate over at Monarch Housing Associates. That's also a nonprofit that provides work on developing affordable housing for individuals and also nonprofits. So we have formed a partnership to take advantage of the Special Needs Housing Trust Fund Loan Program administered by the HMFA, the New Jersey HMFA. As you may be aware, the housing partnership is matching dollar for dollar any funds taken from municipal affordable housing trusts to develop affordable housing for developmentally disabled people. And that's why I'm here this evening. I'm asking the Township Council to endorse Special Homes and Monarch to develop a four-bed group home for developmentally disabled adults here in town. Both of our agencies are on the approved list. Monarch Associates is an approved developer of affordable housing on the Department of Consumer Affairs website, and so is Special Homes as a provider of services. There are over 40,000 people, developmentally disabled people, waiting for placement from large developmental centers and also from their own homes who need our services, and we're here to ask Precipity to be a partner with us in developing that program. Any questions?
Just to remind the public and perhaps the council, you would authorize the execution of a memorandum of agreement with the state to participate in this program, and the purpose of it was to protect the Affordable Housing Trust Fund money that you've collected and that you have in your account, because on July 1 of this year, by statute, that money gets forfeited to the state. And because of the action that you have taken, while it will go to the state, it will be put into a segregated account for use in Precipity. And so the part of the process now is to begin dialogue and create partnerships with nonprofits, so that you can actually implement the program that you had signed on to. Again, there's a dual purpose to it. Number one, it creates more affordable housing in Precipity and does it with monies that are in Precipity, so you're protecting that money for Precipity use, and you are also, through this program, assisting in the development of affordable housing in fulfillment, if not of your current legal obligation, most would say, in fulfillment of a future obligation that is set to come. Can you give me your card, by the way, so we can...
Yes. Also, our group homes are supervised 24 hours, 7 days a week. It'll be a four-bed group home. We seek to hire employees from the surrounding community. We make great neighbors. We have 25 years of experience in a proven track record of quality services. We are supervised and inspected by the state once per year, and again, we have a good track record with that also. We are, the project would cost about $500,000, which would go to the acquisition and the renovation of the group home. The renovations would include possible accessibility for people with physical challenges also. Many of the people that we serve have multiple disabilities, and they would need, the house to be renovated to accommodate them, ramps, accessible bathrooms, kitchens, that kind of a thing. So if Precipity would commit $250,000, the state matches that dollar for dollar, and that's our $500,000.
Terry, do you need the letter now, or once you locate...
We would have to go into a contract on a property, and that's where it really starts the whole process with HMFA. So, once we got a contract on a property, we would appreciate then a letter of endorsement listing both Special Homes and Monarch Associates.
Have you identified a property yet?
No, we haven't, no.
And John, this, the funding is money already collected, correct?
Yeah, the tax of participation is from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Right.
And again, the benefit is that you're creating affordable housing in Precipity, and you're able to keep your Affordable Housing Trust Fund monies here. The concern is, and I should also really give credit to now Assemblywoman DeCroche, who's really the one who spearheaded this program, when she was a Deputy Director of the Department of Community Affairs, and recognized that municipalities would statutorily lose the money that they had collected in their Affordable Housing Trust Funds. And so again, this program is a way to enable municipalities such as Precipity to keep the money to benefit their communities while at the same time providing additional affordable housing in Precipity.
That's correct, yep.
Do you know what the turnaround time is in terms of, once you're under contract, and when you would need that letter of endorsement? I'm just trying to figure out whether, I don't know that the council wants to make an endorsement without knowing...
Sure. I mean, you, this is really just an opportunity for me and Hasish to introduce ourselves. You have to do your research on our agencies. We have to go into contract on a house.
Okay.
And it would be about, it takes about four to five months possibly for HMFA to actually close on the loan. But part of the paperwork to do all of that would be an endorsement from the town. That would be one of the first things after a contract on a house.
You're not asking for anything tonight?
No, no. Well, we are asking for $250,000 eventually to do the dollar-to-dollar match, but not tonight, no. Just an introduction.
That's why, if I can get your card that way.
Are there any other homes with your agency in this general area?
We only have a supportive housing apartment here in Precipity. We do have two group homes in Denville, two in Boonton, and one in Wharton. We've been established for 25 years.
And they're similar to what you're looking to do here?
Yes, they are, yep. 24 hours, 7 days a week supervision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, ordinances, second readings, and public hearings. All in order for next meeting, Mayor?
Yes, everything is...
Okay, status of adopted ordinances. All effective with a date of 4/19/2012. Discussions, reminders. Scheduled meeting, 4/10/2012, 7:30 PM. Regular meeting, public invited, public participation. 5/8/2012, 7:30 PM. Agenda meeting, public invited, public participation. Minutes for approval, agenda meeting of 2/7/2012. Regular meeting of 2/14/2012. Closed session of 2/14/2012. Next, we're going to go on to the mayor.
Proclamation?
Proclamation?
Yeah, there was no proclamation.
Thought you were doing it...
Yeah, I think it's next week.
Yeah, just to mention...
Yeah, it's on here now.
It says for next...
Okay, okay. It seems like it's in the present tense.
Yeah, that's why it's...
Okay.
And the same thing with the second one on there, Mayor?
Yes, because I don't...
Okay, for next, okay.
How about the discussion? What are we doing for the discussion?
That's going to be next week, too.
Oh, gotcha.
It's going to be an add-on to that. Administration, Jasmine.
We're going to be recommending that the first bid be rejected, award of the second, and then the third one, we just received bids this morning, and we should be in a position to award on next week, so we'd like to have that on the consent agenda.
Jas, lowest bidder?
The, yes.
Okay.
And the Sylvan Way project is $100,000 under budget, so...
Oh, nice.
That was a nice project, a nice bid.
Okay, good. All right. Ordinances and introductions. All in order for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay, same resolutions, all in order for next meeting?
Um, yes.
Okay, engineering report, Mr. Cicero.
Yep. Looks like we have a discussion here. Discussion of a memo from our township engineer, Justin Lees. Is this the one I'm holding in my hand dated March 28?
Jasmine?
I have to get that in my pile.
Oh, no problem.
Is it this one?
March 26, the memo?
I have a March 28 memo, let me see.
No, they don't match up.
Okay, well, let me see.
I have a March 28, yes.
Yeah.
Something different.
Excuse us, ladies and gentlemen.
Hi.
No, no, no problem. What I have here is the discussion of memo from township engineer Justin Lees regarding resurfacing of Route 287 just north of the Route 80 interchange, just south of South Street in Marstown, and the discussion of the noise waiver for the NJDOT.
Yes.
Okay.
The...
Do you want to just read those, or...
Only...
They're resolutions, right?
We don't need to read them.
Okay.
I just want to note that DOT is requesting support for the resurfacing of 287, and that project is from about, a little bit north of 280, I'm sorry, of 80, to South Street in Marstown. And for that project, they're going to need a noise waiver because they're going to be working overnight.
Two questions. For the resurfacing, that's all state money, correct?
Yes.
And the noise waiver, is the work being done close to residents?
It's going to be along 287, so most of it should be away from 280, from residents. We really don't have many...
Yeah, trying to think.
...along 287.
Maybe just that stretch of Caliphon Road.
Yeah.
Has a few houses.
Yeah. It's up to the council, are we okay, or...
Yeah, I'm in favor.
Yeah, because I just, it's very far away from the nearest, I mean, that's my neighborhood, so...
Well, their alternative is to do it during the day and block the traffic.
No, 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 no.
Then we have no choice, they have to do it at night.
No, just thinking about it, that's it. All right. Status of road resurfacing, putting stone area, no change. Revisions to the escrow requirements in connection with residential sidewalk driveway repairs, no change. Edgefield Drive, no parking zone upper, no change. Canterbury State's vacation lot, 26 and 77 and Block 98, no change. New road flood mitigation, no change. Train horns at intersections, quiet zones. Mr. Simpson, no change. Glacier Hill sidewalk, no change. Change order number one, park road resurfacing, phase one, okay? The project was funded by a $250,000 NJDOT municipal aid grant and the municipal capital budget. The original bid amount was $290,858, and this final change order represents an increase of 11.47 percent. The primary reasons for the increase were due to the expansion of the project limits, particularly at the DeHart Road intersection and required modifications to the guide rail in order to conform to NJDOT regulations. The final cost for this project is $324,204.78. Resolution must be adopted by the council for this change order. Jas, what's going on with that, the increase? I mean, is that just because of government regulations?
No, it's, we actually expanded the project. We extended the limits of the project, and the actual net increase between the increases and the decreases is only $33,000.
Okay.
And it's, you know, so it's a $324,000 project, 250 of that comes from a DOT grant.
Okay. All right, that's it, Mr. Stan, I'm done.
Okay, we'll have the resolution for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Chief Financial Officer? Resolutions, everything in order for next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anyone have any questions on the tax appeals, or do you need to talk to Danny Casse?
They were minor appeals. They weren't significant. The expert reports are there. Mr. Casse is recommending the settlements.
I think they will send an email.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, nothing under attorney, nothing under township...
Council President, if I may, under attorney.
Okay.
I had a sidebar discussion with township attorney regarding signs on our parks. I brought it up last, at the last meeting, that our parks should not be closed from November to April every year. We didn't build them to close them. And it was done under a legal recommendation. However, Mr. Inglisino, I believe, agrees with me that if we put up, if we change those signs to say that parks are not maintained between November and April, used at your own risk, we don't have to close the parks, and people don't have to feel like trespassers if it's a nice day and they go to the parks. And I'll defer now to Mr. Inglisino.
I think that's right. We looked at the issue of liability for the parks, and essentially, what we discovered was, although the sign said that the parks were closed, and I know, I think it was Mrs. McNulty that had raised the issue, they really weren't closed. There was never an ordinance that was passed, and the previous administration or the administration before that really didn't have authority to quote-unquote "close the park." So if somebody was in the park, a township park, between November and April or March, they really couldn't be cited for trespassing. I think the sign was there, it turns out, really just to dissuade people from using the park. The council certainly has the ability, if it wants to close the park, to do that, but it certainly doesn't need to. The liability standard is that you're, first of all, the township is protected under the Tor Claims Act Title 59, and in order for liability to occur, there would have to be a dangerous condition that the township had knowledge of and didn't do anything to remedy, or there had to be negligent work done by a township employee that would have caused a dangerous condition that would have caused injury. Certainly during the winter months, there's more debris, presumably, people may get hurt, you may get more lawsuits. You still have the protections of the Title 59 immunity, and as Councilman DePuro has pointed out, when the weather's nice, it's very unfortunate that people can't use the park. So I think it is certainly a reasonable position for the council to take, to say that the signs be revised in the way that Mr. DePuro suggests, so that the public certainly is aware that the parks are not maintained during the winter months. So if they want to use them, they certainly can, but they just need to be on notice that they're not maintained.
Do we need to have a resolution for...
No, do we need a resolution?
I don't think you need...
Or just administrative...
Yeah, I don't think you need a resolution on that, because there was never a, an action by the council taking that we could find, and in speaking with some of the folks in the administration, the recollection is that no action by the council was ever taken...
Right.
...with regard to closing of the park. So my view is, there's no action required by the council. I think that the administration, from what I understand, is going to heed Mr. DePuro's, Councilman DePuro's recommendation, and change the wording of the signs.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Stan, I actually have a couple more things to report, if I might. We received an opinion today from the Government's Records Council with regard to an Oprah item that was challenged by Mr. Woloski, who is sort of well-known to municipal clerks throughout New Jersey, because he's sort of the self-appointed Oprah vigilante. He goes around and seeks public information for the sake of seeking it, and if information is redacted or not provided, he apparently has a habit of filing actions with the Government Records Council, which is where you go if you feel that the municipality is not giving information that it should under Oprah. And he actually litigated an Oprah request denial, or I should say, information that we had recommended be redacted, and the Government Records Council rendered a decision, a pretty lengthy opinion today, that upheld the action by the township, and so I wanted to make you aware of that. Also, with regard to tax appeals, the deadline was April 2, and there were 115 new cases in tax court. Tax court is, basically, that's where tax appeals are filed, filed for parcels that are assessed at over $1 million. That's up from about 93 that were filed last year. And with regard to the county board appeals, there were 154 appeals filed. Again, these are properties assessed at under $1 million, mostly residential properties. Last year, I don't have the exact count, but it was approximately 130, so there was a modest increase in the number of new appeals that were filed this year.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to open this up to the public. You'll be given five minutes to speak. Okay, if I, also, if I may ask the council, Mr. Barbaryio, Mr. Inglisino, please do not answer the questions till the end of the question period. I do not want to turn this into a back-and-forth.
Jonathan Nelson, 202 Patriots Road. Next week, there's an ordinance being, I guess, a second reading, 2012:14 on the fees. Is that still on, is that still on the table for next week?
You talking about the Board of Health?
Yeah, the Board of Health. The reason why I asked, I remember at the last council meeting, I think Councilman Ferrera, you mentioned something about a change in it. Is it still as-is right now, or...
I am waiting for a phone call back...
Okay.
...to discuss it with the...
Can I bring it, can I bring it up, just an observation on it? I know the fee, the restaurant fees, restaurant license, the fee hasn't gone up in a long time. I don't have a problem with that, and it's a modest fee, but there's a provision in there for a second and subsequent inspections, re-inspections, which I really do have a problem with, and it's really because a restaurant or any food establishment can get a satisfactory rating, and there might be a minor adjustment that has to be made. Let's say the screen door in the back of the building needs to be replaced. The health inspector will say, get it fixed, and I'll come back next week. With the proposed ordinance, that's going to cost the business owner an additional $200, and this is really a very subjective, it's really subjective with the individual health inspector on how these, as far as, let me rephrase this, on how they're going to decide to come back or not. So although I don't have problems with the increase in fees, the reinspection fees, I really think needs to be discussed and thought out a little bit more. That was that. Second thing is, as Councilman Cicero saw me pulling out of the library today, I spent the better... What's that?
I didn't see anything.
Okay. I spent the better part of the afternoon looking for answers about the Open Space Fund. And to the best of my knowledge, and I guess the township attorney will say, there was only a new line item for Open Space Fund provision starting in 1997, and it was in that year that I saw that bonding actually took place from the Open Space Fund. It was started with a quarter of a million dollars in 1997, and then every year subsequent from that, there was bonding done. I think that's it, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just for your knowledge, that's going to be part of my discussion.
Okay, I wasn't sure what was it you had asked.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm waiting for it. I got an email today, I'm waiting to call me back. For the public's information, Jonathan Nelson was in the kitty section of the library.
My name is Bob Venedzie. I live at 102 Brook Lawn Drive. At the last council meeting, I raised the question of whether Precipity violated state statutes when it tripled our open space tax amount as a result of the 2003 home revaluation. At that time, Mr. Inglisino asked for a little more time to look into the matter, but his February 14, 2012 memo to the mayor seemed to clearly indicate that the 2003 increase did violate state law when he wrote, and I quote, "15.8 does not permit municipalities to increase the open space tax levy because voter approval is required to increase the levy beyond that which voters had previously authorized," end quote. Having had further time to research this matter, Mr. Inglisino, in your legal opinion, did Precipity violate state open space statutes when it allowed the open space tax to triple in 2003 as a result of the home revaluation?
No, in my opinion, they did not, and as you know, at the last council meeting, it's not that I didn't have enough time, I didn't have any time, because you raised the question that evening. And as I read 15.72 and 15.72B, I think that it doesn't. It speaks in terms of, these concepts here relate to the ballot questions, and in terms of how Precipity were, how Precipity phrased the ballot questions. First of all, there's no case that supports your thesis or your hypothesis on a violation of an open space law. There's no case that even discusses that concept. But when you read the statute, because Precipity and the ballot question back in 1988 did it in terms of a rate, that that's what applies. And so as long as they don't exceed the language that was in the 1988 statute in terms of the 2 cents per hundred, in my opinion is that there was no violation.
Well, the statutes refer to amount and rate.
Well, no, it doesn't. It says amount or rate, amount or rate, and it also pertains to different concepts as well. One concept is, it talks about the subdivision, and the other talks about the sum in terms of what was approved by the voters. Again, you have to relate that to the ballot question, and the ballot question was very clear in what it said. There's no, I don't think there's any gray in that at all. It said the 2 cents or less than 2 cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation, and that's what applies. And the township, to my knowledge, has not violated that provision, but certainly not by virtue of a revaluation in 2003. That's my opinion.
And it doesn't violate that quote that I just read you for 15.8?
No, it's, the quote you read was in a different context, and my opinion is, it doesn't violate the statute. And again, I've looked at it both in terms of the reading and statute, and I've researched it for cases that even consider the question, and there's nothing out there. So I think you're taking, I think my legal opinion, sir, is that you're taking concepts and not applying them correctly.
I just want to point out that there were many towns that did lower their rate. They interpreted it different than you.
No, that's not true, sir. It's not true. Just because a town lowered its rate doesn't mean that they concluded that they would be in violation if they didn't. In fact, there are many municipalities who have voluntarily decided to lower their rate. When I was on the Freeholder Board, the counties did it, not, the county did it. out there. So, I think you're taking, my legal opinion, sir, is that you're taking concepts and not applying them correctly.
I just want to point out that there were many towns that did lower their rate.
Well, that doesn't-
They interpreted it differently than you.
No, that's not true, sir. It's not true. Just because a town lowered its rate doesn't mean that they concluded that they would be in violation if they didn't. In fact, there are many municipalities who have voluntarily decided to lower their rate. When I was on the Freeholder Board, the counties did it. Not the county did it. Not because they would be in violation if they didn't. It was because that's a policy determination that they made. So, I don't agree with your conclusion, nor do I find any case law that concurs with your conclusion, nor do I find any case law that even discusses the issue in the context in which you bring it up.
Well, I mean, I think it's about time this issue was discussed. And I would like to get a ruling from like an impartial judge or arbitrator, you know, we've got-
Thirty seconds. I'm here to-
How do I go about doing that? You know, I mean, I'm ready to take it to the next step.
Well, I'm not here to represent you. I'm here to represent the municipality. So, I'm the town attorney, and I'm giving you my opinion. That's an honest legal opinion. It's not an advocacy opinion. It's the way I read the law.
What do I do when I want to challenge a decision?
Sir, that's not a question for the municipal body to answer, and certainly not one that I'm going to answer for you.
Okay. I guess I'll have to find out on my own.
Thank you.
Robert Simpson. Oh, I can cut that up a little bit. Robert Simpson, 30 Hillsinger Road, Mount Tabor. I want to talk about this train horn thing here now. Back in 2008, this council, and there's one, two, three people here that were there back in 2008, they made a resolution to investigate putting alternate safety measures on the grade crossing. The town engineer, George Winters, decided that he would investigate putting in safety measures, $700,000 versus the alternate safety measures, $70,000. I don't know why we accept this, but John, you read that every meeting. You read that $700,000 one.
Are you talking about the engineering report?
Pardon?
The engineering report?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. And back in January of 2011, now I'm reading this stuff from the minutes, you know, this is not stuff I'm making up. I had come into the meeting, and I said there's approximately 750 people living in this half-mile corridor, and they're in the noise impact zone. Mr. Mayor Barberio said that he would direct the engineering division to perform a study. That was in January of 2011. I don't know if he ever did. I don't, I never remember seeing it. They did finally, they did the demonstration of the wayside horns between 50, I got some figures here, between 50 and $100,000. And the report was made. And in May 17th of 2011, Mayor Barberio said he would distribute copies of the report to the council for review, and then a decision would be made. That was in May of last year. In June of last year, the mayor said he would put the wayside horn on the July agenda meeting. I don't think anybody got that report back in May, apparently because you keep reading the $700,000 one there. And there were no minutes for the June agenda meeting. But my notes say that the mayor was going to put it on the July agenda. So, when I got up at the meeting in July, no one got the report, no one discussed it. And the mayor said that he wasn't going to discuss it anymore. After previous meeting, he said he would. And I had asked about getting any kind of funding from the county or the state. And Mayor Barberio said that he would ask the township administrator-
Thirty seconds.
-to research if there would be any funding. And I don't know if she researched anything. So, where do we stand on this now?
Mayor, can I ask you to check with Justin, just on numbers alone? Because we keep getting the same thing with the number 700,000.
I know.
We're giving some with numbers.
I'll get the numbers from Justin. But right now, Justin-
Okay, I know, I know.
...is inundated with Lake Hiwatha. And I'll see if I can get him to give me information on that wayside horn report, which I'm pretty sure I did give to the council. But that being said, if I didn't, I will find the report, and then you will receive it. But I will talk to Justin Leesa tomorrow because we'll be in a meeting together. I think it's tomorrow or Wednesday, I mean, Thursday, we'll be in a meeting together. No, I'm talking about the one with FEMA. But that's really, okay. I handed you a copy of the report.
Mr. Simpson, Mr. Simpson, your time's up. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Five minutes. Thank you.
Yeah, so it's Thursday. Okay.
Kill that microphone. Hi, my name's Julia Peterson, 25 Vol. Precipony Road. I'm really not here speaking for anybody but me. And I decided today not to write a statement so I can look everybody in the eye, because I don't usually do that, and that's kind of disrespectful. So, I want to be sure I'm looking at you guys. And I have, this is just for your information. I'm going to give you this, there are six copies of it. It's a little graphic that I did about the field usage at the high schools. And on it, it has when sunset is, the hours that the schools need them, and the hours that are, excuse me, not needed for school programs. So, it's kind of a graphic that shows you that if you're giving up, they're giving up 51% of their time, they're really not going to be able to run their programs. Okay, that's all on that. I wanted to express my concern about the fact that the minutes aren't getting on the website very fast. I know that there's challenges on that. But it really helps people in the public if they can read them on the website. And the last ones that are on there are in November. So, it would just be great if that could happen. Also, I mean, despite the really heroic jobs that people are doing in the clerk's office, we're coming up on a primary in June. One of the things that really guarantees the solidity of an election for all of us is that the clerk is really responsible for that. So, it's going to be of concern to all of us that that primary is supervised in a way that is fair and just. And the last thing I want to say, while I'm looking at all of you, I came home from the hospital to Precipony when I was born. People that I'm related to have lived in Precipony since 1790s. And those of us that were here in the 1950s, which is a dwindling number of us, remember when Precipony really was an open place. And one of the reasons I didn't live here for 35 years was I couldn't stand to watch any more of it get torn down, especially when Route 80 was built, 287 was built. I mean, we've, people who've been here that whole time have watched a lot of things get ripped up. And I think that's why I value so much open space monies being used for acquisition of open space, and maybe nothing else even, but acquisition of open space. In 1988, there were 2,000 acres left. Now, I think there are 500. And those acres that are truly open, nothing, don't need tax dollars. They don't need school rooms. They don't need taxis. They don't need buses. They don't do anything. They sit there, and we look at them. So, as for closing, I want you to consider, the next time you're out driving around, look up at the hills that you can see when you're driving, because we're surrounded by hills. Imagine if those hills had buildings all over them, because that could happen. Most of those hills have private property. Thanks. Not all of them belong to Precipony, of course. Thanks for paying attention.
I just got one, I just got one quick question off the graph you sent in.
Yeah.
The month of August.
Okay.
Yellow area, school use area.
Yeah.
The month of August for school use?
Apparently, yes. I didn't think so, but I checked. Starting August 8th and August 15th, both high schools begin their athletic programs. So, they don't need them at night.
Oh, you mean, so it's athletic use, you mean?
Athletic, all of this is athletic use. This is all field use. But when I asked them, I said, "Well, July and August, you don't need them." And they said, "Oh, no, we start practicing." So, if the track is practicing, you know, they need that space. Thanks.
You stayed within the lines, too.
Not really, if you look at it. I didn't go to the children's room today, so I never stay within the line.
Thanks, Julia.
Members of the town council and Mayor Barberio, I am in support of the Field of Dreams project.
I'm sorry, can you just state your name?
Oh, I'm sorry. Terry Krigliano, 28 Bell Road.
Thank you.
No problem. Okay. I'm in the support of the Field of Dreams, mainly because it'll provide a great field for the children and the community and the high school to utilize. I'm especially in favor of it because it will not raise taxes, and we will be utilizing funds readily available to us through the Recreation and the Open Space Fund. This project only makes sense. In times when our government is asking us to conserve our efforts and share services, what better way to do it? This project clearly is a clear example of how school boards and town councils can work together for the better of the community without raising the taxes. The community as a whole will reap the benefits of such a venture for years to come in maintenance fees and usage, not to mention other costs. Other schools in the surrounding Morris County area have already installed turf fields, and so many people have enjoyed it. They've used it for their gyms, for their sports, for their marching bands, and it has so much great potential. This project makes so much sense, and anyone who would not support it clearly has other motives, and other motives rather than the best interest in the children and our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Terry.
You believe that took your chair away?
Hey, I guess I'm the last one, huh? Hapatacha, 182 Hawkins Avenue. I made your concern tonight is, first of all, would you be having the budget talks in front of the public now, you know, talking about the budget?
We'll answer your question.
Oh, okay. And if so, when and what have you? But tonight, I would like to take mention on the sewer, using the surplus. Apparently, our revenues have been greater than our expenditures for many, many years in the sewer department. We've never had to touch this before. Anytime we've touched it, we've touched a certain amount of it to put into capital funds to meet that need. And I just find it very hard to see that $2 million is now being used out of that surplus, even though it's being used for the sewer department. I want, I want to know what happened to create that $2 million that we had to use in the surplus. I want to know what happened. How all of a sudden, where, you know, we needed to take from the surplus when we never had to before, especially after the, you know, the 52% increase. This shouldn't, this should not be happening. The sewer is, you're telling us the sewer is deficient in funds? That's exactly what you're telling me. That they did not meet their, the revenues did not meet their expenditures this year. What happened? $2 million. What happened? And, okay, you're saying we have $7.4 million in the sewer surplus, okay? This year, you're going to use $2 million of it, plus another $700,000 to put into the capital fund. And I want you to realize that the year before, you took $700,000, put it into the capital fund. The year before that, you took $700,000 and put it into the capital fund. So, in essence, this administration has used $4.1 million of surplus money that was promised to come back to the taxpayers. That is, anything you say will not explain this. I'm telling you, it is just unbelievable. And, I mean, there'll be more questions like this coming. I mean, I just, I, sorry, I just don't understand it.
I'll respond now. I'll respond.
Just wanted to say one quick question. Isn't it an ongoing practice that the sewer each year puts $2 million right back into their fund?
But all of the utilities and I, the year that sewer utility was in trouble, we may, we probably used as little as $50,000. But I don't remember a year when surplus funds were not applied back into the budget.
Because I believe last year and the year before, we did $2 million each year?
No.
We're close to.
We didn't.
Maybe not, I'm saying, it might have been lower, but we did use.
I think last year may have been 1.8.
1.6, 1.6 last year.
1.6. So, I've been missing this all this year, too.
Just to start, it's not three years in a row, number one. Only $700,000 was used last year into the general fund, not the prior year, not 2010. Basically, the history of the sewer treatment plant, as you know, in 2005 was running in a deficit about, I think, $26,000. And then the following year, in 2006, it was headed for another, if I'm wrong, if I don't have the numbers correct, it was headed in 2007 for another $500,000 deficit. Okay? So, then the money from the general fund was put into the sewer treatment plant to prohibit it from going into a deficit. So, in essence, in reality, we use taxpayers' dollars and put it into the sewer treatment plant. While 2011, we had surplus. And I use a surplus, and in a normal, from what I understand from the consultant that I met with, is to use 5% of the revenues of the sewer treatment plant. We could have actually used more last year if we wanted to, decided not to. But taking this $700,000 and putting it into the general fund, it lowered the tax levy 1.6%. So, we lowered the tax levy at the same time, which means we had to collect less taxes than the average house assessed at $309,000. This year, alls I'm waiting on is going to, is an opinion from the rating agency to see if we can do it again. I want their opinion only because I do not want to affect our rating bond, our bond rating. If they say, "No, Mayor, this doesn't. You have surplus. You have an efficient amount of surplus. You can do it," I will do it again because I'll lower the tax levy once again. So, there'll be less dollars I need to be collected from the taxpayers. If actually, you're giving a tax break by doing this. And, but, the reality is this, we're using that money, and you're giving it back to the taxpayers. You're giving it back to the whole tax base, in fact. And I have the consultant also looking into the fact that what can we lower the rate by? And there's going to be a study done by the consultant to see if we can lower the sewer rate this year, considering our sewer treatment plant is 95% completed. And when the sewer treatment plant gets up and running and is efficient, you're going to see a cost savings in electricity, a cost savings in the plant altogether. You've got to remember, for 16 years, this plant was ignored. 16 years it was ignored. It was dilapidated. It was the third-largest user of energy on the eastern grid. Our energy bills now, they averaged $130,000 a month. Now, they're averaging approximately $80,000 a month, and this sewer treatment plant is 95% done. Okay, wait till we get the incinerator up and running, then you're going to see an increase in revenues that can go to the general fund. But the sewer, the sewer dollars can go into the general fund. We've done it last year. It's not illegal to do, but it does lower the tax levy, and it does lower taxes by doing this.
Mayor?
Mayor?
I know we discussed it on Saturday. I know Pat was- I know Pat was in here. The consultant is also going to let us know about being able to take a chunk, right, of that surplus?
He said we could already.
No, I'm talking about, like, a million and a half.
To refund.
And just giving it back to the rate.
No, you, you put it into the general fund, the same thing. Right into the general fund.
Can you do me a favor when you talk to the consult, I'm sorry, Mr. Cre, when you talk to the consultant, just ask the consultant, can we take a million and a half and apply it prorata to, to bills?
Credit.
To credit against the bills? So, somebody gets a quarterly statement instead of, and I'm making this number up, a $90 payment, they make a $40 payment, because they got a credit, so.
Well, I can ask them, but I, I wouldn't do it that way. But...
Pat, I don't think you were here on Saturday, but we did bring that up, and I actually threw the, you know, had the number of, if we took a million dollars of that surplus, being that this would still leave us with 5.4 million in surplus after the $2 million was used, to give it back. And I know the mayor said we were going to check on the, the bond rating. But, that's what I, I would like to propose, that if we, we still have that much surplus and the surplus is increasing at that rate year after year, to give a credit back to the people, the taxpayers.
Well, you are giving the credit back by putting it into the general fund, and that's the industry norm. To give credits back, if you start giving credits back to residents, then you take, you have the possibility of raising the rates the following year. So, you've got to be very cautious of that. You lower the rate one year, then you increase it the next year, because you've got to determine how much you're going to give back. You can't deplete the surplus. That's one thing you can't do. It was depleted already, and we got to the situation we're in because it was ignored.
Good evening, my name is Michael Peterwitz. I live at 480 Park Road in Precipiny. Again, I want to acknowledge and thank the council members who were present at the March 13th meeting, Mr. Carifi, Mr. Cesaro, Mr. Stanton, and Mr. Ferreira, for stating your public support of the Field of Dreams project. You had some questions about project costs, you had some, you had some questions about quality of life compromises amongst different parties, and those things are still being actively worked on. But again, I want to thank you for your public acknowledgement and support of the project. Not a lot has changed since we started this, this dialogue over four or five months ago. It's probably one of the most discussed projects in the township, which is great. And I think the mayor has always said, and many of you have always said, open, public dialogue is great. We're still awaiting, I believe the Board of Ed is still awaiting a response from the State Department of Education on the analysis and request of something called the Conservation Aisment. If and when that comes through, I think things will go to a different level. So, in that situation, not much has changed since I last spoke with you. Some other things haven't changed. The fields at Precipiny Hills and Precipiny High have not been used since November. And when I mean the fields, I mean those main athletic fields. Those fields will not be used again until, where Ms. Peterson acknowledged, in, in August, when football season begins, there are mini-camps. That's a community asset that gets used such a short period of time, for practices in August, potentially, and 12 games a year. That's the community asset that people are trying to improve, not only for its appearance, not only for its safety, but for the use of all of our students, from kindergarten through high school, and for all the community residents that have the opportunity to access those fields and enjoy them. Mr. Cesaro gave me a quizzical look when I walked in the room with this big book, and I've been the brunt of many jokes from friends and foe, of carrying this very large book full of over 1,200 signatures from people in this town.
I actually tried to knock it out of your hand.
Yes, you did. I'm going to continue to carry this because it's, it's, it's a symbol to me, and it should be to you and everybody in this room, that this is a project that has broad interest from all ages, all residents throughout the community. This field is much needed and is much wanted. Couple of other things I do want to comment on Mrs. Peterson's remarks about open space, and I would agree, and I think many people would agree, preserving open spaces is absolutely essential, as is restoring and purchasing historic properties. I've sat here and I've listened to lots of money, half a million dollars for Craftsman Farms. I've recently learned about a $600,000 purchase for the Baldwin home that I'm not sure if it's gone through, but it sounds like the council has talked about it extensively. Those projects are used through pooled resource of open space trust fund dollars. I mean, let's be open and honest about this. That's not specific to an allocation to historic preservation, it's the pooled use of those annual dollars that come in. What we're talking about with the recreation program and with the restoration of our fields is the same use that the Baldwin home and the Craftsman Farm funding is used. It's a pooled use of current tax dollars. So, we're not setting any precedence here. We're kind of asking for the same treatment. Let's use some of those pooled dollars to improve a community asset for the greater good and the greater use of everybody in this township. Look forward to speaking with you after we learn more, hopefully soon, from the State Department of Education and our Board of Education. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mike. Seeing nobody up?
No, it's okay.
Good evening. My name's Tony Fasano. I live at 41 Robin Hood Road, Morris Plains. I live in, with an office complex behind me in Route 10. My family and I have resided in Precipiny for 28 years and counting. I've watched our town programs grow, and in sports, with great pride, and watching our kids enjoy it. Being a booster on many booster programs with Precipiny Hills Vikings, our volunteers raised a lot of funds, as well as using our own personal funds to help improve school grounds, making them safe and playable. To gauge the time, my son's slightly playing here, sports is five years old. He's 25. Previous council meeting, a woman suggested go to the Board of Education meetings. I did. I worked with Eugene Vasile on many sports and educational issues. We still had the same problem back then, funding. Education came first, extracurricular activities came second. It's great to see our new, our governor forcing the towns to use Board of Educations and Town Shared Services to keep our taxes down. If the voters wish to increase school funding, maybe it's time to change the Abbott law, be equal funding to equal children, and make sure they're resident in the town. The Precipiny Hills High, excuse me, Hills and High Fields over the past years have major work performed on them, especially the Par Hills Track. The cost of the new field increases our taxes by zero. It will reduce maintenance costs, it will increase the educational utilization for physical education, especially at the Par, at the Par High, which floods. I wish to commend the mayor, town council, Mr. Peterwitz, on improving the fields, and everyone, I think is forgetting, our greatest town asset, is our kids. They'll find, they'll get the greatest use out of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing nobody come further, I'd like to close the public session. At this time, I'd like to call Mr. Weber. If you just want to do a little background right on.
No problem. My name is Dan Weber, 28 Chesapeake Avenue. I'm also the captain of Precipiny's Rockaway neck for state squad. Spoke short with the council members, some of them regarding funding, concerns that the squad has. I'm going to speak for Rockaway neck, I'm not going to speak for Precipiny volunteers, they are in the same boat as us. Historically, the state of New Jersey has had what's called the Training Fund, EMS Training Fund. As you probably all know from, over the years of the news media, it's been pilfered by governor after governor. It's finally at the point where it's not an option for us to use that for training EMS. Excuse me. The going rate right now would just increase to $1,500 per person going through the EMT $30 for books, I believe, with that. And then, once you achieve your EMT certification, you have to maintain what are called continuing education units, CEUs. You need 24 of them to recertify your cards. Every class you take for your CEU, every CEU class you take can be anywhere between $30 and $1,000, depending on the class you take. Some classes, basic classes are cheaper, you take a more advanced class, pre-hospital trauma life support, it's about $600 to $800 for that class. We're finding, the volunteer squads are finding that we're now paying the training out of, out of our general funds. We're very gracious through the town council for what, what help you guys give us throughout the years. That, along with the donations we receive by doing our mailers and fundraising through the town residents, though it helps, we do feel that it's, it's getting to be a little bit hard not relying on the training fund to just be able to fill out a voucher and send somebody to EMT school. Now, we have to rely on the squad funds coming out of the general funds to pay for that, and also the continuing education units we have to pay for also. My idea was not to come to the town council and say, "We need more money." That, that is not what I was doing. We're very gracious, you guys are very gracious and have always been over the years for what you give to the volunteers in this town. Unlike the fire departments, when they go for firefighter training, that's good for life. They go through firefighter one, they don't need to recertify that every year, or every three years. Where EMTs, we have to continually keep our certifications current by going through school, continuing classes, stuff like that. That's where the cost comes in. You know, the initial cost of firefighter one compared to EMT is probably compatible, but over a three-year period to recertify your cards, it, it almost doubles. I, I'd come up with the thought of possibly putting a $1 surcharge on every summons issued in the township to go into a fund for EMS training. I do know the state of New Jersey already has a dollar from each summons issued in the state, but we're no longer seeing that dollar come to us. I do recall back in the, I'm going to say the late 80s, early 90s, when I joined the squad, there was a hotel tax from the town that I do believe was supposed to go to EMS. I don't know if that's the general stipend of money that's given to the squads, or if that was money that was given for a specific purpose. We don't, you know, we, I don't know that was before my time, I just remember being mentioned when I was coming into the squad. So, I don't know if that's a feasible avenue to look towards. But, you know, I do know the state also lifted the legislation as far as what the towns could give to volunteer organizations, as far as monies. But we're not looking for more money. We're not coming to you and saying, you know, "Wow, we need more money." That's, that's not our purpose. We're asking, is there a way that we can come up with a fund within the town to fund training for the EMS? I'm, I'm sure all you know, the way life is going right now, it's becoming harder and harder to keep, or to find, train, and keep good EMTs, because of the fact that their jobs, they need to work two jobs, you know, they can't afford to live in this state, they need to move out of this state. It, it's fine and hard, and when you train somebody for $1,500, and they're there for six months and then get transferred, you know, legally, I can't go after them and say, "Well, we trained you and you left," you know, but it does happen. So, that was my main purpose for speaking to the town council about, you know, maybe cooperatively, we can come up with a, an idea that would work to help, you know, ourselves and the other EMS squad in town.
Can I ask you this? Are some of the volunteers actually paying with their own money? Paying their own money to go to these courses?
I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going to say, Mr. Cre, that that hasn't happened. I know myself, I've taken a few classes that I've paid for out of my pocket, only because it wasn't something that I needed for the squad, but it's something I wanted personally. The squad would have paid for it or reimbursed me for it, but I just felt that it was something I went for, just for me to have, rather than something I was, I was, you know, was needed or requested by the squad to have. So, we, we try to, we've kind of frowned upon it because, you know, you're volunteering with us. We say that, you know, every volunteer organization says, "We, free training, you know, we provide the training." You know, we like to cover that, you know, where we can, but, you know, I can't say it doesn't happen.
I know you guys didn't like the idea, but one way to raise those funds would be to allow us to do the bill back for insurance companies and Medicare, and give you the money to do that. You would have the funds for your training, and there'd be no additional dollars needed. Now, I know you're volunteers, and, and we never charge anybody who's, who cannot afford it, who does not have insurance, but as it stands now, we're doing favors for Medicare and private insurance companies by not billing back to those, those agencies.
I understand, Mr. DePiero, no disrespect.
It's just another way to raise the money. I'm just making a suggestion.
Dan, and I, I agree with Mr. DePiero, that was the idea that I was kicking around a couple of years ago, but I was told in plain English, "No, we don't want it."
No, again, no disrespect, but...
I want to honor what the, you know, the volunteers want, but...
Yeah, no disrespect, but I'll take money out of my own pocket and pay for my training before I'll bill a resident for, for volunteer EMS.
You're not billing a resident, you're billing...
You're billing the insurance companies, which...
Insurance companies, who are getting a free ride of, when you do this for nothing. And Medicare, the federal government's getting a free ride when you do this for nothing. Okay? We never bill anybody who does not have insurance and cannot afford it. They go free still.
I, I understand, it just takes the whole volunteerism...
I understand.
Out of, you know...
Okay. There was another alternative to get the funds...
I, I understand, Mike, I understand.
That's why we checked with you first way back when.
No, I, I understand, and, and I, I know I've had discussions at length with many of the council members versus paid volunteer, that, that whole saga. You know, I, I do what I do because it makes me feel good in my heart to know I'm helping my community. I had, have worked for a EMS-based company, Atlantic Health System, for 10 years prior, and it just didn't give me the same fulfillment that I was doing it for a paycheck versus doing it for the kindness of my heart to my, my residents in my community where I live. I, I just don't, I'm, I'm not a pro-billing type of guy, you know, for what we do. And I understand, Mike, I understand what you're saying, for generating a revenue, I understand.
You still would not be getting paid, the money's not going to you, you're still volunteers. It's just paying for your training, or for whatever else you need over there.
I, I understand, but, you know, my, 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 just my stand on it is, is I'm not a proponent of it.
I've pointed it out, I'm done.
Oh, thank you. No, I appreciate it, Mike.
I believe we're going to look into that.
Okay.
The other idea with the adding a dollar to summons.
I know the police department's also under, you know, staffing restraint and not, you know, patrol division isn't, you know, out there killing them with tickets, but, you know, it's just, it was just an idea I threw out. You know, you can only do so many car washes to, to try to generate funds to cover this stuff. I, I do thank everybody.
If you want to call a meeting with like, two or three of your people and a couple of us, maybe we could just sit around the table and throw some ideas around. I just heard of it, so I'd like to think about it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. I'm, I'm fine with that. You know, I think, I think a think tank would probably...
You know how to reach out to us, right?
Absolutely. I think a think tank would be a great idea.
Give me a call.
Okay, sir. I thank everybody for the time. Thank you.
Dan, thanks for all you do. I make a motion to go into closed session.
And just to be clear, the motion would be to go into closed session to, to discuss ongoing, and as well as threatened litigation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cesaro, second by Mr. Farah, roll call.
Mr. Carifi?
Yes.
Mr. Cesaro?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Farah?
Yes.
I got to read the... Resolution, whereas the open public meetings, Act PL 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the township council is of the opinion that certain circumstances presently exist, and whereas the township council wishes to discuss ongoing and threatened litigation, whereas the minutes will be kept and once a matter involving the confidentiality of the above no longer requires...
Can you please keep it down? We're still on the record. Thank you.
Confidentiality of the minutes can be made public now, therefore be resolved by township council, township Precipiny trails that the public be excluded from this meeting.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Cesaro, second by Mr. Farah, roll call.
Mr. Carifi?
Yes.
Mr. Cesaro?
Yes.
Mr. DePiero?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
If I don't see anyone after the meeting, have a good night. After the closed session, excuse me.
What happened to Jerry?
Hello, Jerry?
Hello?
Doing good, thank you.
Hey.
Yeah, she had some problems, maybe removed her lymph...
Uh, yeah, the second...
She was fine for a while, but then without a lymph gland, fluid solidified in her arm, it blew up, and she had to move twice and it's back. So, three months ago, they went in a lot deeper to take it out, to take that cyst, that cyst that formed on her arm. It was painful, very ugly. So she's recovered from that. Will do, thank you.